Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024. Please join in the platitude.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
We have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters relating to a particular corporation, matters protected by FERPA, matters relating to negotiations with the EFA, and the superintendent's evaluation. My name is Danielle. Second, my name is Mr. Cassidy. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close of sessions, very clear. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are returning from executive session where we discussed matters relating to a particular corporation, matters protected by FERPA, matters related to negotiations with the EFA, and the superintendent's evaluation. Turning to open session to hold our public hearing. I'd like to call the public hearing for the 24, 20, 24, 2025 school budget. Return it over to the superintendent.
To thank everyone for joining us today, again, here we are in public hearing for the 24, 25 school district budget. Here's our agenda for today, and again, we'll go through each one with these bullet points one at a time. We've been doing this for the last three months since, so I think you kind of know the routine, and so we'll do. So, you know, again, we just focus on the values inclusion. It's something that we, you know, really use as a device to guide us in terms of programming and opportunity for our students, and it really helps us to stay focused on the needs and try to develop the best program possible for them. Here's the proposed revenue budget, and you can see two dollars changes, the projected for 24, 25. The tax levy is where we get most of our money in our community economics, our demographics. The majority of our budget income is from taxpayers, so we're going to see about a $1.1 million increase there. We're looking at interest on taxes and things like that, about $5,000. We look at state aid, you can see a decrease. Part of the reason is that the debt has come off the books, so we're receiving less aid accordingly. Sales tax has been really positive for us. We're looking at about $188,000 increase in sales tax. You can see some miscellaneous revenues, a grand total of $1,304,236. So appropriations, where did we spend our dollars? And the majority for us is spent on salaries and fringe benefits. You can see there, the increase is associated with both of those. We got some small increases in equipment and supplies in contractual areas. We have some state aid tuition that we anticipate increasing. What we can see there, we have some, a nice decrease in both these services, and that's primarily related to some of these services that we brought back into the district. So that's been really positive in a number of ways, positive for our students in terms of their programming, but also positive for us in terms of some of the others as well. An increase in transportation, which we've been talking about early on in the school year, in January. First student came to us and said they were struggling, and that they actually were running in red for the first seven weeks of the year. We talked about the renegotiation of our contract, because our contract was up, and they told us it was going to be about 35% increase. Fortunately for us, Ms. George and her negotiation skills, that came in closer to just under 15% for about a $308,000 increase. So you can see there, again, the appropriations increase of about $1,304,000 to $136. The tax levy limit calculation, again, we've been looking at this for several months now. It's 4.28. One thing I'll point out about that, 1% of that is related to our facilities project that was voted back on December of 2022. The project passed, and we said that there was a 35% increase that is coming on the books this year. So 1% of the 4.28 is devoted to the facilities project, and 3.28 is devoted to the general Tax rates, again, here we are. Ms. George, I don't know if you want to kind of explain what we have here?
Yes, our three towns each have a different tax rate, and it is showing the progression over several years, and that it's different per town based on their equalization rate. So the full value rate is the equalized tax rate. Each town, when you apply their equalization rate, the estimate estimated rate for next year is $12.12 dollars and cents. And then on the bottom, the total parcels, one of the factors in the tax levy limit calculation is a tax-based growth factor, which means that we have additional properties within our boundaries. And as you can see, that it has grown by 40 properties over this term. So that's one of the factors in the calculation that increases it over the 2%.
So the proposed budget, our current budget is $43,876,000. The increase is $1,304,236 for a proposed budget of $45,106,998. So we look at the assessed value, if you look at the bottom line there, we've used this kind of calculation just as a point of reference. Again, the equalization rates, again, are a big factor in this. So when we look at the turnover of houses that are assessed at $100,000 or less, which is the majority of the properties, that's an increase of $280 for the school year. About $48 is associated with the facilities project, and about $160 is related to the So here it is, the, again, per people expenditure, we look at this, ours is just over $19,000. In area county, it's $20,131. And for all New York State school districts, it's $25,870. Capital outlay, each year we do a capital outlay project, which is $100,000. And these projects have to be spent at one school. This year, we did it at Parkdale, and we were able to improve the asphalt in front of Parkdale, where parents are dropping and picking off their students. So we're really happy about that. The project turned out great, and we're also able to install speed bumps that can be removed. So they're going to be installed for the fall and the spring and taken out during the winter. For next year, we're looking at masonry work at the high school. We need some replacements of broken bricks, replacements of ceilings, concrete panels, those types of things, and so that $100,000 will be used at the high school for next Our reserve funding, this is, again, something that we've been talking about now for several months. The board and Ms. George and I, we're going to have to decide where we're going to place our money that's left over at the end of the school year. Some of the reserves that we're considering are EBLOs related to our employment payouts, TRS and ERS, our development systems that our employees are members of. Also, we can see a technology is one that's going to be actually on the proposal for this year. We're going to be spending $75,000 out of the reserve to replace Chromebooks and other technologies for our students. And that's one of the technologies that we have to get permission from the public to spend. It's not easy with all of them. Capital reserve, repair reserve. So those are the things we're going to have to consider as things clear up between now and June 30th. Then the proposition for number one is for the budget. Again, it's $45,106,998. The second proposition is for the expenditure from the technology reserve for $75,000. Again, that's for student technology. Here it is, we always talk about what happens. If it doesn't pass, we get a lot of questions from the public about what happens. So if we, once it doesn't pass, we have to reduce the proposed budget by $1,112,809. And so that in general is like four FTEs, that could be administrators, teaching positions, support staff, or a combination of all of those. Would be no equipment purchases, reduction in athletics, single curriculars, no capital outlay projects, various contractual obligations, like our SROs, those types of things would be in consideration, and then reductions of materials and supplies. And again, these are just examples of what would be reduced, but we would look at the entire budget and reduce appropriately. So here we are, end of the process. Today is the public hearing. Then we mail out the budget releases, and then we vote on May 21st, like all the other school districts in New York State. So any questions?
This is the portion of the meeting where we will open this up to community comments, only really the public hearing on the 2024, 2025 school district budget. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to share with the board?
Sure. I'll let you inform them. We seemingly had a budget crisis a few months ago before the legislature took action to restore all but the 3% aid for EA schools beyond the governor's proposed budget. Then there was a collective sigh of relief when a generous amount of state aid funding for schools was announced. One board member stated that they were relieved that EA refrained from discussing possible staffing cuts, as occurred in several school districts in the region, because funding was largely restored, and it saved the concern of students, staff, and community over potential position cuts. I disagree. I see it this way. There were three categories of school districts in the response to addressing the one-time influx of COVID funds. Category one, let's give them a grade of A+. Those districts accepted these funds as were intended to temporarily supplement programs and services with nonrecurring expenses. These districts followed state and federal guidance by not adding new positions that would become part of the base budget. Category two, let's call them the B- districts. They ignored state and federal guidance and created new positions in the base budget. However, these districts realized they reached a funding cliff when COVID funds ran out, so they began the process of right sizing by identifying positions that would need to be cut in order to balance the budget. Category three, let's call them the D districts. They ignored the guidance against investing a temporary infusion of dollars on nonrecurring costs and ignored the need to right-size now that COVID funds have expired. They are squeaking by on borrowed time and borrowed fund balance. These are the districts who are kicking the can down the road and hiding the truth about many positions permanently added to the budget. These districts will be paying a hefty price in the next two to three years. They're in denial that they have created a budget imbalance because of their mistakes. Do you see which category you've placed EA in? The choices you've made have set us on an unsustainable course. Most taxpayers are largely unaware of the ticking time bomb you set, at least for the moment. And I don't know that I agree that most homes in this area, in our district, are valued at $100,000, because that's probably about a $188,000 home. I'm with yes. I'm just picking the number because I own one of those homes. My property is valued at $104,000, and it's a very humble ranch from the 50s. Most of our homes here are going to see, I would say, minimum $200 to $800 in higher increase in their taxes. And I'm hoping the voters speak with their feet. Thank you.
Thank you for your information, Mrs. Horni. Is there anyone else?
Yep.
Good evening, board members. At 4.28% levy increase in a period of escalating inflation, we're facing a hefty number. Actually, it's much higher than many of the neighboring districts. Some homeowners in this district were struggling to pay their school taxes before this year. I'm sure you're aware of that. The community deserves to have a rigorous budget development process with ample opportunity for input and questions to be answered. Sadly, I didn't see that happening throughout this budget process. I strongly believe you have a moral duty to improve the process. In my opinion, the process is woefully inadequate and a disservice to the public. I'll briefly summarize the problems here, but I have a handout that I'll present to you shortly, or include references, links, and additional details. In short, the budget process sorely lacks, one, easy access to information that taxpayers need and to which they're entitled; two, data-driven budget decisions on the rationale to continue funding or expanding programs; three, evidence of efficiencies that demonstrate that the district is being a good steward of taxpayer funds; and four, meaningful community engagement. Most importantly, I've observed a disengagement with the public, failure to provide answers in what I consider to be a degree of disdain in this forum for community members who ask budget-related questions. I've honestly never seen such alienation and disrespect of the public before in all my work with boards over the decades. Some neighboring districts have a Q&amp;A link on their website, some allow questions and answers throughout the process, some directly involve the community, but I didn't see that here. While your process and the leaders at the top may not be as responsive as I would prefer to see, I have found that some staff members are examples of how taxpayers should be treated. After writing to the board and superintendent about the inability to find the required proposed budget document online, your board clerk contacted me. She listened to my suggestions. She worked with the appropriate people to improve access on the website, searchability, and placement of documents. I'd say that's impressive. I do hope you see this as an opportunity to do better with the process in the future, and I thank you. And may I approach to provide you a copy of?
You're welcome to leave them in the bin on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on the 2024, 2025 budget this evening? Any board member comments? Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? My name is Danielle. Second. Second, my name is Mr. Cassidy. All in favor? Close of sessions. We are carried. Moving on to item five, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes this evening? Moving on to item? Item eight, any legislation to come before the board? And nine, board member comments. I have one, Mr. Cassidy.
Just a brief question. We talked about having a discussion item on a future agenda prior to making the decisions about how the surplus funds will be transferred into reserve accounts. Is that going to occur, and when?
Yes, it will probably occur in June.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Danielle? Moving on to item 10, administrator comments. Anyone have anything this evening?
Just wanted to note, there's an invitation at each of your seats for our LEAP Caston event that is taking place on May 22nd. One thing, as typical of East Aurora, we're doing really well in track and field, and that's at the modified level as well, and we were notified today that the modified finals are on May 22nd, and we have nine of our LEAP students. So we are working out right now how to adjust that. We might make it like a 3:30 to 7:30 event, so the times could change, so we'll follow up with you, but I just wanted you to have this invitation. The other thing I wanted you to know is, last night was a really exciting night at the middle school. We didn't count, but I would say between 100 and 150 parents of incoming fifth graders for our parent information night, and it was incredible. We had music pumping, we explained to them about the web program that we're bringing in, which is that transition program for fourth graders coming to fifth graders, or to fifth grade, and it was just a high-energy evening, and we've never had so many compliments, and that buzz is just there. So it was a really exciting night for us, so I wanted you all to know that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for sharing. Anyone else this evening?
This Friday, we are sponsoring our PTO Go for Blue and White obstacle course at Parkdale. It's our one big fundraiser that our PTO puts on each year. We are $175 away from our $20,000 goal, so the students have done an incredible job over the last month taking pledges. All students get to participate in the obstacle course whether they've gathered pledges or not, but a huge thank you to our PTO for sponsoring that and taking the lead for that this year. We know the students are really excited, and we're really hoping any rain holds off until later in the evening.
Thank you very much. Fantastic. Anyone else this evening?
Since they're inviting you to events at the middle school of Parkdale, we still have positions available for chaperoning of the post-prom. So if you were interested, Mr. Brunson? So, no, but the spring season is really kicking off at the high school next week, and we have a spirit week around our proms, Friday and the Saturday morning, and I think there's over 250 kids who have purchased tickets. And our PTO for putting together will be an exciting post-prom event back at the high school, which includes a mobile magician. So we'll have a performance on stage like we've had in the past with a hypnotist or a show, but we're going to have a mobile magician roaming the crowds. That will change. And then many other things to share as the weeks move along here in the spring, but I'll hold off the Clark's meeting for those things. So if you're interested, 10:30 until 1:30 at the high school. You don't even have to tell me, you just show up.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Anyone else this evening? Thank you all for being here. Moving on to community member comments, this is where we open up to general comments. Mrs. Zapp, I think you wanted to speak?
Sure.
And to those who have not spoken, we ask folks to keep their comments to three minutes in the meeting.
Good evening. My name is Linda Zapp. I live here in the Village of East Aurora. My son graduated in East Aurora, from East Aurora in 2022. I have a daughter graduating this year. At the board meeting in November 2021, Mr. Roberts made a presentation about the proposed removal of the use of class rank. One of the unfortunate parts about this decision is that it was to be implemented for the class of 2024, kids who had already begun their four years in high school. This was, as I see it and consider it, of the classes of 2024 and 2025 who had begun school under the rank system. We were told that colleges were no longer, that colleges no longer considered it as important consideration for admission. And during my daughter's college research last fall, we found that their most current information on common data sets for college websites listed it as something that college is still considered. Under colleges that listed it as very important were Colgate, Yale, Stanford, Ohio State. As colleges that listed it as important on their websites were RIT, Cornell, University at Buffalo, Lemoine, University of Pennsylvania, Ohio University, and the University of Massachusetts. Other colleges which said they considered class rank for admission were Bucknell, University of Rochester, Kenesha's University, Ithaca College, and the University of Chicago. Obviously, this is not a comprehensive list, just ones that we had come across while she was doing her college search. In the fall of 2021, I called some colleges myself, among them Penn State, Kent State, RIT, and others, and spoke with admissions counselors. When I asked if a student with a high class rank on an application was being considered for admission, whether that class rank was considered as part of their admission process, they often said that they had a more holistic view, which had been discussed by the board. But they also said that if it was a high class rank, that they would definitely make a note of it for their admission considerations. During his presentation, Mr. Roberts stated that before the final decision was made on class rank, parents and students would be asked for their opinion, for their input. My question is this: Were parents and students actually asked to weigh in on this topic as had been indicated? I never received a notice. My daughter, who's in the school every day, never received a notice, or a questionnaire, or a survey, and I feel like we were never given the opportunity outside of making public comment to give a broader decision. My son wanted to be here tonight, but has been busy preparing for a trip. And one of the things, another one of the things that we've been discussing in our household is the use of honor cords, and that they're obviously going away this year in being, to use the sashes or the stoles that they're going to use to create the list of symbols for graduating seniors. And I know that my son, who graduated in 2022, submitted a, he sent a letter to Mr. Roberts at the high school through the mail, and expressed his opinion and his disappointment that honor cords and that kind of recognition are going away, because he felt that that was very important, that kids who look back at their pictures from graduation, you know, take fond memories of their achievements in school that way. So it's something that they look at again and again, and so he just wanted to make that note. So thank you.
Thank you for your opinions.
Good evening again. My comments aren't intended to embarrass or ridicule our cubes, but I am here to ask one question and make a humble suggestion. My question is this: Did you directly confer with your board attorney on the three superintendent contract amendments you approved between December 2022 and December 2023? Those amendments totaled $36,292.75. Now, I'm not inferring that these contracts may or may not have been worthy of being awarded to the superintendent. However, the issue is whether you received assurance that they comply with all state and federal laws and regulations. My humble suggestion is this: If you have not already done so, you should confer with your attorney. Perhaps you might even consider getting a second opinion. And if you're not confident in these amendments after legal consultation, perhaps you might consider your board actions to be rescinded and return the money to the taxpayers. Also, while you have your attorney's attention, you might want to check on your options for dealing with a board member who violated your code of ethics policy and general municipal law by having a business interest with their spouse in property of 657.
Dr. Kevina?
Yes.
But these questions sound a lot like accusations, so I think you might want to submit these in writing to the district versus in public comments.
Well, I have documentation that I'll leave for you.
That sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
It is a serious matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Horni, do you want to speak to the board again?
Yes. Dear Board of Education members, we have repeatedly and politely requested that you comply with open meetings law in posting documents to the board agenda on the website. We even consulted with Mr. Paul Wolf Esquire, president of the New York Coalition for Open Government. He wrote, "Whatever documents board members have received regarding agenda items should be posted online for the public to see. If the board is voting on a contract and a copy of the contract has been provided to the board members for the meeting, then the contract should be posted online. This is not a hard concept. Simply scan the board packet and post it online. Boards all across the state do this." Public Officer's Law 103E. Public Officer's Law 103 E requires public bodies to post any document available under foil at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, during which the records will be discussed. Since you refuse to cooperate in complying with the law, moving forward, we will foil all documents that are not attached to the online agenda. If you refuse to provide a document under foil, you will be required to explain to us, per law, the reason for your refusal. We prefer not to pursue this avenue, but then it would be completely unnecessary if you complied. Thank you."
Thank you, Mrs. Horning. As you are aware, we have spent a great deal of time and legal dollars reviewing the requirements of open meetings law, and I believe you've had responses to that repeatedly. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the board this evening? Moving on to item twelve, reports and discussion items. Moving on to the business office reports.
Yes. Good evening. Tonight's materials, our financial materials, are as of the end of March. As of the end of March, we had sixteen point four million dollars, almost point five million dollars in the bank, which ties to our cash flow. I see no problems with making it through the summer with our cash flow. We had expended approximately sixty-four percent of our budget and received approximately ninety percent of our budget, which is on track and normal. In the cafeteria fund, revenues are exceeding expenditures by about sixty-four hundred dollars. As per child nutrition, we are expending our fund balance to the level that they want it to be. Some of those items included the middle school cafeteria, you see the new wall, that's where that money came from, from the cafeteria fund, not the general fund. Also, in the federal fund, we are on track to expend and receive all of our stimulus money. It has been, our plan and use of the stimulus funds have been reviewed by SED. It wasn't necessarily an audit, but SED is reviewing every single school district in the state of New York. We were commended for our plan and having a balance of purchasing one-time items and also purchasing staff members to address the SEL concerns the district has been seeing, which was one of the main priorities, learning loss and SEL for our students. As of the end of March, in all of our federal funds, we have expended one point six million, and we've received one point four million. And then in the capital fund, we have two projects going on, on phase one of the big capital project. We've expended about a half a million dollars in the capital outlay project. As of March, we had expended about twenty-five thousand, but in April is when the paving was done, and a bunch of the rest will be in the next meetings. Financial reports. Any questions?
Well, thank you to the business office and to the finance committee for addressing all those issues that might be of concern. Thank you.
Moving on to item B, the capital project update.
Yeah, so we continue to move forward with this phase of project, progress getting started over the April break. We have a lot in terms of them actually getting ahead of schedule, so that's been really positive. And so Mr. Schrausky is going to be with us next month to give us a detailed evaluation of what's happened so far, and what does it look like as we move into the summer. And so we're on track, and things are moving on nicely. Yeah, so pleased. It's been going pretty well.
I poked my nose into some of the demolition work going on. It looks great.
I have a couple things from the meeting on the eighteenth of April. Just so everyone is aware, I know the middle, the high school doors have been an ongoing issue with getting the supplies, etc. All the high school doors have now been completed, as have the Parkdale, the PAs and the clock wiring is done, along with the fire alarms. So that is the capital outlay project for this current year. And the IT department is working on Parkdale's data closet to consolidate it, and that is expected to be done around mid-July. And over April break, the demo of the classrooms, a hundred and three to a hundred and five, and first floor, first floor toilet rooms were completed, and the bathrooms and roofing work is ongoing. And the middle school drainage phase, the interior work was completed, but I know this whole, this whole thing came up, we were like, well, why, why are we having this issue? One of the things that they thought potentially could have been was when they were taking, they were doing exterior pipe repair at Fillmore Street that was needed, and the reason it was needed was because there was an unforeseen blockage that nearly damaged the contractor scoping and jetting equipment, and that likely was the reason why the original plant burned out in the first place. So that's what they're concluding, was the reason why, and maybe, well, why did this happen? So this hopefully gives us some information as to why. And that is it. And we're having a meeting on the twenty-second of May, the capital utilities meeting, and there'll be a larger update after that.
Moving on to item fifteen, consensus items. Is there anyone who wishes to request a withdrawal of the consensus? I have a consensus. We have a motion to approve the consensus agenda. Moved by Mrs. Oiler. Second. Seconded by Mrs. Horning. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions carried six zero. Moving on to item sixteen, items requiring board action. Item seventeen A, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation to declare Parkdale Edenland tax as surplus and obsolete? Moved by Mr. Brunson. Seconded by Mrs. Oiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions carried six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the agreement between the East Aurora Union Free School District and the EA AA. Is detailed in your agenda. The motion. Mrs. Daniel? Seconded by Mrs. Cassidy. Discussion. All over here.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions carried six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve-- East Aurora Union Free School District-- and the EA AA and the EA CSPA. Is detailed in your agenda. Moved by Mr. Kevin. Seconded by Mrs. Oiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions carried six zero. Any new business to come before the board? I would just like to thank you all for being here this evening. This is shockingly brief. I thank you very much for your time, always, and all of your efforts. I know it's a very, very busy spring, and thank you for all the continued good work that you do. For any other information, please see your agenda for a list of upcoming opportunities to engage. And-- Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Grade six zero. Thank you for your evening.